Good morning and welcome to the 11th of March, the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee meeting of number two of 2021. The first thing I'll do is note councillor attendance. We have here councillor Milligan, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekno, councillor Johnick, councillor Ireland and councillor Kunselman. I do note that councillor Madsen is not here. Has anyone received an apology? No. We also, you'll note that councillor Tully is not here, however, he has been unwell this week and so he has organised beforehand to have an audio link. Now, this is allowed under the Act, however, under our meeting procedures, I do need to move a motion for that to be allowed. So I'd like to, good morning, Paul. Morning councillor Tully.
Morning.
Morning.
Hello.
Hello. I'd like to move a procedural motion that will allow councillor Tully to participate in today's meeting via the audio link. Who would like to second that? Councillor Ireland would like to second that. I'll leave that open for discussion. There being no discussion, put the matter to the vote. Thank you. I'll say it's unanimous apart from, thank you councillor Tully, that was unanimous with other people here. I'll just note that councillor Madsen's not here. We'll now move on to matters. Declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Do we have any declarations of interest? Yes councillor Milligan? Your microphone?
That was just to practise. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009 by councillor Russell Milligan, before the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 10, titled Development Application Recommendation Material Change of Use, General Industry, Shed Kit Storage with Ancillary Office and Including Loading of Metal Brackets for Offsite Shed Construction at 262 Huggsley Eamle Road, Balloon. The nature of the declarable interest, conflict of interest is that I have a pre-existing and ongoing personal business relationship with some of the submitters. I, I'll be dealing with that by leaving the meeting room.
Thank you very much councillor Milligan, appreciate that. Are there any other declarations of interest in matters in today's committee? There being none. We'll move on to business outstanding, there being none. We'll move on to confirmation of the minutes. I asked someone to move the minutes. Thank you deputy mayor and a seconder, thank you councillor Kunselman. I'll open that up for any discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Tully, if you're in favour, could you please say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So it's unanimous of the councillors here, it's passed. Thank you. We now move on to, pardon me, item two, which is the Brussels Bike Way Stage Six, connecting structure options. This recommendation is that option two, the lift, as outlined in the report by the senior transport planner, dated the 5th of February 2021, be adopted as the preferred way forward to progress the Brussels Bike Way Stage Six project and be used to inform future planning, detailed design and construction activities. And that B, that the order of cost for option two, as identified in the report, be noted and considered for future investment programming activities. And C, that upon construction option two, data monitoring activities be undertaken on Brussels Bike Way Stage Six and option one ramp, as outlined in the report and so on. I propose that we deal with each of these separately. So may I have someone who will nominate recommendation A? Thank you deputy mayor. A seconder? Thank you councillor Milligan. May I call the relevant council officer to the stand please, to the lectern, sorry. Sorry about that.
Tandy Delio, manager of infrastructure strategy.
Yes. Mr Delio, would you mind outlining to us what community consultation has occurred for, as part of this, looking at these options?
Certainly mayor. As part of the development of the Active Transport Action Plan, which is a child strategy of IGAWA, City of Ipswich Transport Plan, there was some community, a survey that was held in 2016 and that provided a level of consultation with respect to bike ways across Ipswich. In 2017, the Brussels Bike Way Stage Six Corridor Plan was not consulted on directly with the community, as there were some private land that was subject to that project. It is expected that we would inform the community further, once we've got some more detail as to the alignment, preferred alignment options and the connecting structure. And as previously mentioned in a committee meeting earlier in June of this year, there are plans to undertake some community consultation and more targeted sessions with the bicycle user group and the strategic overview of cycle projects within the Ipswich city centre.
Okay. Mr Delio, I note page 24 and 25 of the report talks about the ramp option. Note that the ramp option obviously is for cyclists, but it's not disability compliant. Do you mind providing some information on why that is?
Yes, certainly the structure, the ramp structure would be three metres wide, which is appropriate for that type of structure. To be disability compliant, it needs to have grades of one in 14. To achieve those grades, it requires a significant amount of what is called switchback. So you keep moving back and forwards to obtain the grades to get to the appropriate height. Switchback are not preferred by the cyclists because of the tight turns at the end of each of those switchbacks. And cyclists generally can, while it's not disability compliant, cyclists can certainly achieve, you know, use grades that are much deeper than one in 14. In addition, the additional structure that would be required, length, has impacts on the hydraulics, so the flooding impacts, both upstream and downstream, if that was to be achieved. And obviously, it's quite, because of the additional structure that's required, there's additional cost in that as well.
And there's considerable cost difference, I can see, Mr Delio. Somewhere between the ramp would be between 13.5 million and 22 million versus the lift and path option, which is 5.8 million.
That's correct. Those costs are for the full alignment, not just the structure itself or the lift itself. But certainly there is significant cost difference between those two options.
Just to remind, how has council identified the key stakeholders that need to be engaged in future consultation around these sorts of projects, particularly with bicycle user groups?
Yes, certainly we have those lists of the bicycle user groups. It's, we have those lists. How we came up with those, I'd probably just need to go back and determine, but certainly we have those full lists of key stakeholders.
Yep. Yeah, I'd like to see that list if I could and potentially add some names to that list for future consultation as well.
Certainly.
Do you mind closing? Thank you. Just note to the secretary that councillor Madsen has arrived. I think the other thing, Mr Delio, is at the moment, Shape Your Ipswich, which is the consultation, online consultation platform for the council, is running at the moment some consultation on cycling. How will the feedback from that be fed into the work here?
Yes, certainly this particular project and these type of projects, they're more commuter use. So these projects align with the principal cycle network plan, which we developed in combination with the state government and certainly our Active Ipswich plan. So these are what we termed commuter bike ways. The work that's currently, or the engagement that's currently out with the community is more about recreational bike use. So there's a slight difference there, but certainly the information that we receive will also tend to inform these commuter bike ways as well.
I think, Mr Delio, what are the issues will be, obviously, is the cost. I guess I'll ask either yourself or the CEO, that obviously if option two was recommended does, is the preferred option, what are the timeframes of that getting done versus if it was the ramp option, which is obviously up to 22 million dollars, what would be the timeframes of that occurring? Would you know that or would the CEO know?
I can try and provide some advice and the CEO can certainly add to that. So with the lift option, then the intent would be, if council agrees to that, we would progress in the next financial year with some detailed design and hopefully, subject to funding availability and council deliberations on budget, we would look to move then towards construction. The same thing, I guess, could occur-
The construction in 2022, 2023?
It would probably be over the two financial years, 22, 23 to 23, 24.
Thank you.
Certainly with the ramp structure, it would, could be a similar sort of timeframe. However, given the additional cost that would be required for that, council may have other more pressing strategic transport projects that may take priority and therefore delivery might be a little bit later. So it could proceed on a similar time basis, but it would be subject to financial constraints. CEO may wish to add to that.
Well, yes, essentially, we-
You put, sorry, my turn.
Essentially, we would have the ability to deliver within that timeframe, as long as council prioritised it within that timeframe.
Okay. And Mr Delio, at the moment, the state government have been quite generous as part of the cycle network local government grants programme, it's been a 50/50. Do you know the appetite of the state government to continue that 50/50 with either option?
So at this point in time, the state government having committed to whether they would, through that grant, commit to 50/50 for either the lift or the ramp. The lift is something that doesn't quite align with their intent in commuter cycle ways. The idea is not to disembark. The ramp structure is, given its significant cost, the state haven't committed to 50/50 funding for projects of that magnitude. And therefore, at this stage, the state haven't fully committed to a 50/50. Having said that, should we, should council decide to run with the lift option and given its significantly lower cost, and the state government doesn't come forward with a 50/50 option and council wishes to fund that fully, it still would be less than the 50/50 option on the ramp structure.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr Delio? No, thank you very much, Mr Delio. I now open the matter up for discussion amongst the councillors. I guess for my thoughts, from what I can see, the last time community consultation occurred on this was probably around 2016. A lot's happened in the CBD along that. It's also been nearly five years since that consultation happened. I would much prefer to do some community consultation, not just with bicycle user groups, but also, you know, residents in Ipswich. The right part is to find out what their appetite is. There is a significant cost difference. I do know if we're speaking to cyclists, their preferred option is the ramp. I know councillor Fekno and councillor Madsen have spent a bit of time with the bicycle user group here. So I guess for myself, my preference would be to do some community consultation. What are the thoughts in the room on that?
Well, if we've already been seconded, choosing option B. If the recommendation clearly says that we're choosing option two, so by consultation, do you mean informing the user groups of the decision that we make today? I think that there's probably better connections that we can make. It was fairly serendipitous last week councillor Madsen and I actually met with Bicycle Queensland, fierce advocates, you know, and good governance structures mean that they have been able to achieve really good outcomes for communities across the state. So I'll probably be proposing an additional recommendation that we bring them in, but I'll save that for recommendation D, after we've discussed A, B and C. I take it that you've split them up for a reason, because we're only moving and discussing A.
Yeah. I thought it'd be, I think this was, I split it up because I think we need to have that discussion, whether we're going to proceed now or whether we want to do more community consultation, in which case we can amend that motion to do something like that. Is that what you'd be inclined to do? Councillor Fekno?
You know, I have the inclination that if we send this back for community consultation, that the recommendation will not change because of the cost, because of the, you know, the political nature of the cost of the ramp versus the lift, you know, and that's just my opinion. But I think that, you know, we'd probably land in a similar situation, because, you know, the bicycle user groups will want this sooner rather than later. And if achieving that means, you know, opting for the lift, I guess the consultation could happen, you know, when we're designing the particular structure. I mean, this is a huge commitment. This is a big decision that council is coming to today, but it only commits us in a way that helps us frame the budget, you know. And honestly, we can't sit around this table thinking that we could ever afford the ramp, you know. So in the decision in this room today, it's about, you know, how do we make this feasible so that we can actually see it in the budget within the next two or three years? Because if we opt for the ramp, then that amount of money, depending on the appetite of the state government, we might not ever see that in our time. And then the bicycle user group is disaffected by not having an outcome sooner, you know. So, you know, I guess it's a shame that we didn't bring those people in when discussing these options. I'm sure that if we took them on the journey, that they would be here in our position. This committee has full delegation, so we don't have the privilege of, you know, of coming back next week with new or fresh ideas. I think that it might be important to add a recommendation here that identifies Bicycle Queensland as one of the key stakeholders and bring them in for at least a discussion around, you know, what we're doing with our cycling network in Ipswich. I don't know how my fellow councillors feel about it, but, you know, the option here for us is to kick this can, you know, further down the track if we choose to go against the officers' recommendations of the lift or we start the planning process by allowing council officers to act under, you know, council decision to proceed with the lift and therefore it will appear in our budget sooner. That's the decision that we're making here today, as I see it.
Sure.
Mayor, my, the way I view this matter as the final stage or the last connecting bit of a large, greater project that's been undertaken over many, many years, the regular users of the network already, very keen for this, the crucial last connection piece, stage six to be completed. I think as a council, we need to be, make the decisions that are right and true for our residents. In doing so, yes, we need to make sure that we are making that decision, which is what best suits the community need. And rather than drag it out too longer, we just need to be decisive and move forward with this final stage to connect that last link.
And councillor Milligan, it might be the last thing for Division Four, but for the rest of the city, there's many other parts of the cycleway that need to be done as well.
Through, mayor, I concur with councillor Fekno's comments. I'm just wondering, the way forward, is it potentially to amend recommendation A to incorporate?
Well, deputy mayor, unless councillor Fekno would like to propose an option, a recommendation D now, or would you like to do that at the end and see how things go first?
My understanding of what's been discussed is that we, well, some of us would like to move forward, to progress the bike way, stage six. But where we talk about to be used to inform future planning, that's where we are looking to potentially bring in additional bike user groups.
Sure.
And I guess just generally give it a health check, that from a strategic point of view, it is correct.
Nothing, was that you councillor Tully wanting to say something?
No, I'm happy with that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on recommendation? Yes, councillor Madsen.
I still think it's a ridiculously expensive option, the lift, I would just say that. It's a real chicken and egg scenario. We need more people to utilise active transport in our city, so we need to build the infrastructure. But at the same time, the current usage probably doesn't warrant flash lift like this. Where I'm at with it is I think that as elected officials, we should seek a political solution and try to get the transport minister to really do something with the rail corridor between the railway workshops and Tomla Place. And even the land that they do nothing with on the corner of Ellenborough and Bremer in the CBD. We can't just go on spending money in, in ways that, you know, like QR and the transport minister should just open that up. They don't, they do very little maintenance at the railway workshops on trains currently. It's just, you know, and I love the railway workshops, but the whole, it's ridiculous. There's a perfectly good bridge there and there's a perfectly good corridor for transport and it's not utilised. And it's right there.
Thank you councillor Madsen.
Yeah.
If councillor Fekno?
Yeah. Again, I mean, we make a decision, we're making a decision today about a lift or a ramp or we propose an alternative outside of the paper. You know, there's, you know, we can't write to the transport minister and hope for, you know, a better outcome in that way, in my opinion. I just don't think that, I don't think that's going to change anyone's views, technically speaking, and if needed, Mr Delio could probably speak to this, but there are broader concerns around, contained within the paper, there's broader concerns around the actual viability of that, considering the services that surround that particular corridor as well. So it's, you know, it's not really a cost effective solution and to then go back and reconsider, you know, this decision once more, I think it's just kicking the can down a path we don't want to go down, but that's just my opinion. This decision today for me, and I will speak in favour of the lift today, it's about a budget decision that we have to make as a council. And that's how I see it. Yes, it's a real shame that we didn't consult with our bicycle user groups, but to make sure that this is on everyone's radar, including giving us the power to go and discuss with the state potential funding options and incorporating the lift solution into potentially 50/50, I think that's a great way to, for us all to move forward. So yeah, I speak in favour of adopting the lift option two.
Thank you. I'll close off discussion now and just to put the matter to the vote, I guess just to say that this is a bike way that the public are waiting for. I get a lot of, all across the city, no matter where I am, this is probably the number one path, Missy Link, I think councillor Milligan was talking about, that people are asking for. And it is a massive, as councillor Fekno said, a budget, massive difference in options. So I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And councillor Tully, if you wish to support it, just say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I'll just say that those in favour are myself, councillor Tully, councillor Milligan, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekno, councillor Johnick, councillor Ireland in support. Thank you. Those against, councillor Madsen and councillor Kunselman recorded against, though the motion has passed for recommendation A. None of that recommendation A has gone through. Recommendation B, may I have a mover for recommendation B?
Mayor, if you may, would we be inclined to move recommendation B and C together?
Happy to.
With the addition of a further recommendation there, Vicky?
So councillor, do you have, are you proposing a recommendation D?
Yeah, I am proposing to move A, B and my proposed, sorry, B, C and my proposed D. That council recognise Bicycle Queensland
Mm-hmm.
as a key stakeholder and representative of bicycle user groups and consult with the organisation regarding the citywide bicycle network.
You happy with how that's worded there?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Fekno moves A, sorry, B, C and D. Do I have a seconder for B, C and D? Councillor Milligan? Thank you. Would you like to speak to the relevant council officer on the C and D? No? I'll now open that up for discussion.
Through you, mayor. I just, I wanted to add recommendation D, you know, to extend the olive branch to this pretty important group that took the time to meet with councillor Madsen and myself last week. They themselves have lots of meaningful data about bicycle users within our LGA that we have yet to tap into. Not saying that Bicycle Queensland is the one and only, but I think if we formalise a relationship with them, their understanding of bicycle users in Ipswich will be super important to harness, to use that knowledge and their data to share and to plan for the future. So that's the reason for my recommendation there, is just to formalise that relationship between Ipswich City Council and Bicycle Queensland, you know, so that we can send them ideas and we can run things past them and also use them, you know. Councillor Madsen alluded to the fact that, you know, it's a real political minefield, active transport right now, and there's lots of money up for grabs and it's going to help us plan for the future in the long run of people, you know, using alternative modes of transport. So I think that bringing this key stakeholder in is really important for council moving forward.
I agree. There have emailed me a couple of reports as well, councillor Fekno, and I think they'll be a valuable stakeholder in this. Any other discussion?
Mayor, if I may ask councillor Fekno if we'd also like to just add something to the, to include in recommendation D, that something with regards to acknowledging the outcome or the purpose and or the purpose of the- the, um, the outcome or the purpose and or the purpose of the consultation. Uh, so it, it, the way it reads is that, um, that, that council consults with that organisation, but it doesn't actually state what our desired outcome or the purpose of that.
I, I think we probably have to work through that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I would.
I'm happy with the way it is.
Yeah, sorry, um, I won't, I won't accept that as an amendment to my, um, proposal there, um, but just for the fact that I, I have complete trust that, you know, we will work through that, um, and the council officers, um, you know, to, to give them, I, I don't want to commit them to anything, um, extra, but I just want to say that, you know, this is a meaningful r- relationship, um, that we have and to consult with them. Um, I'm sure that as part of, of my very o- open, um, open-ended recommendation, that, um, council officers would share that information anyway.
Yeah. Um, you're welcome to do a foreshadowed motion, councillor Milligan, or, 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 well, I, well, I, I guess councillor Fekner, who's the mover, has said no, he wouldn't accept it, so you're hel-
Yeah, I'm happy with the outcome of the discussion we've just had.
Thank you. In that case, I put the, I put, um, recommendation B, C and D to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Tully, if you, if you are voting, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I'll look around the room, it's unanimous, thank you very much, so that motion has passed. Thank you. We move on to item three, which is the I Go Freight Action Plan. I resolve that we, I, I move that, um, that this report, there were three recommendations, that we move them all together, as worded, that the I Go Freight Action Plan and Summary Report, um, as detailed be adopted, be that the outcomes and key messages of that I Go Freight Action Plan be communicated to the community, that the I Go Freight Action Plan and Summary Report be sent to the Queensland Department of Transport Main Roads and Department of State Development, it's no longer, that's not the name of the department anymore, but State Development, um, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning, I believe it's called now. May I move, maybe change the name of that department? State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning? Do a comma after infrastructure. Thank you. May I have a mover to those three recommendations? Thank you councillor Ireland, and a seconder councillor Konzaman? Thank you. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No, I'll then open it up for discussion.
Um, just noting through you, mayor, um, that one of the key recommendations here and one of the, the immediate implications for us in budget and, um, and planning, um, of our traffic networks, um, is there's a proposed action 1.3 review and advance planning for the road network within the Ebenezer regional, regional industrial area. I think that, that's, uh, really important and I'm glad that council officers have actually singled that out, um, as one of the key outcomes within, for us to consider, um, in the next budget build, uh, because that is an increasingly difficult area, uh, when it comes to freight and how, and, and our treatment of that. So, um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, thank that foresight, um, and for pointing us in the direction of considering that in our next budget.
Thank you councillor. Yes, councillor Ireland and councillor Madson are very passionate about the, uh, ambly interchange, councillor Ireland?
Um, not just the, thank you mayor, not just the ambly interchange, but the, uh, creation of the Western bypass between the Cunningham and the Warrigo will be so important, um, for the freight distribution from the Ebenezer intermodal. So, um, we, we've, um, spoken to people about the need, or they've spoken to us about the need of looking at it holistically, um, and so, um, I hope that over the years that it'll all come together.
Yes. Thank you councillor Ireland. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor John? Yeah, sure. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come down, please? I think you set your name and position again, please.
Tony De Leo, manager, infrastructure strategy.
Thank you, Tony De Leo. Just in, uh, query in relation to my residence along Brisbane Terrace, is this?
Also, can I ask you to put the, and start again?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Dilio. Just in relation to, um, how this will impact my Goodna residents along Brisbane Terrace, um, is there any implications based on this?
Um, thank you councillor Johnick. Yeah, uh, one of the key objectives is to, uh, minimise impacts to, uh, local residents in, in, um, places where freight movements are required.
Okay.
So, um, through the, through the implementation of the, the action plan, that would be a key objective that we would be trying to achieve. So, um, things that could be done with respect to that, uh, certainly should be and will be looked at.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I'll just check, councillor Tully, do you have any questions of Mr. Dilio?
Oh, fine, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dilio. For discussion, councillor Tully, do you have any discussion points you'd like to raise?
Oh, but I'll, I'll, I'll take it one minute.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? No, then, uh, we'll proceed to the vote for these three recommendations. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Tully, if you say aye, if you agree?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to item four, which is the acquisition of land for road purposes, Springfield Parkway Shared Path Upgrade Project. We have four recommendations here. I propose that we would, uh, move all four at once. May I have a mover for the four recommendations? Thank you councillor Johnick. And a seconder? Thank you councillor Konzaman. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? I'll then open the, the floor for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, please raise your hand if you were, um, agreed with these recommendations. Thank you councillor Tully, are you in, in favour, just say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you, we now come to item five, which is the contract extension for T Tree Bioenergy Waste Disposal Services. And again, there are just the, the one recommendation, that the chief executive officer be authorised to administer a contract extension for up to five years for over up to fourteen million dollars, uh, inclusive of the waste levy but excluding GST, for the provision of waste disposal services and to do any other acts necessary to implement the council's decision. May I have a mover for that, please? Thank you councillor Fekner. And a seconder councillor Konzaman? Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? I'll then open it up for discussion. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Tully, if you're in favour, please say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Let's move on to item six, which is, was a, um, notice of motion response, uh, an exemption for waste collection fee for the Perga Aboriginal Cemetery. So the recommendation is that council continue to provide a waste collection service for the Perga Aboriginal Cemetery, similar to that for park bins, and that no service charge is applied to this service. I'm assuming councillor Ireland, you may wish to move that?
Thank you, mayor, I would like to move that recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Madson. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this matter? No, I'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you, mayor. Um, the, um, Perga, some of the Perga elders, um, had, um, mentioned to us that we don't provide bins at the Harding's paddock, uh, camping ground, and when people are leaving, it's their opinion that people are jumping out and putting the rubbish into their bin or just throwing it into the cemetery. So they don't get a regular service, but they do get a service upon request. Um, so I would recommend that we, uh, continue to, uh, give that free service to them.
Thank you councillor Ireland. Any other discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Tully, if you're in favour, please say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you councillor Ireland. Item seven, which is the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive, it's the implementation, implementation update, and the recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. May I please have a mover for this? Thank you, uh, deputy mayor, and a seconder? Uh, thank you councillor Johnick. May I ask the relevant council officer to elect him, please? I'd like to say your name and your new title.
Yes, good morning, Brett Davy, Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Manager.
Thank you. Um, obviously, uh, Mr. Davy, this has been a, a really big, um, issue for, for council and our community to tackle.
Very much.
Could you please give us some of the highlights of what's, uh, occurred since this directive became, uh, in place on the third of December?
Yep. Uh, so, uh, obviously, I commenced in the role, uh, just about a week and a half ago. Um, in that time, I've reviewed, uh, the work that has been done across council, um, generally in this space anyway, and I suppose the, the summary for me of this, uh, the role is to bring together, um, all of the various pieces of work that's being done across council in the waste space between, um, things like, you know, the, the item on the agenda day, illegal dumping, all the way through to our waste contracts. So, um, there is already work underway on a stakeholder engagement plan, um, there is work underway by our, our waste colleagues on, uh, materials recovery plan and, uh, the future of waste for Ipswich. And so, um, my, uh, work so far in the, the week and a half that I've had is to, um, start to engage with all of those parts of council, um, and to start to engage with the, the industry, uh, about the, uh, programme and what, what we're seeking to achieve. Um, so the implementation plan summary that I've attached is an extract of a, a broader piece of work, um, and it gives a summary of some of the focus of what I'll be looking at for the, um, for the next month, I suppose you'd say. Um, and so that deals with firstly, the, the waste code of practice, uh, and so doing some work on that, um, some meeting, setting up some meetings with industry to talk to them about that, as well as the industry peak body, um, to look at some compliance programme timing, to continue the work that's already done in that space. Um, I'm reviewing documents and doing a fair bit of reading in terms of, uh, what best practice looks like in the waste space, um, so that's a bit of a learning curve for me, to be honest. Uh, then to, um, focus on setting up the joint task force with the state, so I've done some work to, to do that.
And may I ask, Mr. David, that's it, I think the last time I saw, I think, um, some terms of reference, I think the CEO sent out in January?
Yes.
And I've met with the, the minister, um, the honourable Megan Scanlon as well, and she's also looking forward to the, the task force as well.
Yep, so I introduced myself to Minister Scanlon last week at a, at a event, uh, and I've been talking to her staff as well as, um, several other departments about the terms of reference and the setting up of the actual times for the first meeting.
When do you think the first meeting will be?
I don't know at this stage, but I'm hopeful to get it within the next month, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then, uh, I'm looking at some work on mapping of voids, which we already had done some work on that, uh, just to understand the, the extent of voids and what their tenure is in terms of mining history. That links back to, um, you know, the idea of what's, what's remediation look like for that, some of those, uh, voids. Um, and I suppose one of the big things that I'd like to get done sooner rather than later is to, um, establish a stakeholder engagement strategy, um, that deals with a broader piece of work, uh, for community and industry, uh, over the coming, um, at least the year. And, uh, then the other big piece of work I want to try and do in the next month is to get a better understanding of the policy framework that deals with the waste levy, uh, so that I can report back to council on, on the opportunities and constraints in that space.
Thank you, Mr. Davy. Any other questions?
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Davy, can I just get, um, a li- a, a brief summary, I guess, of some of the runs we've got on the board, just with regard to compliance, um, particularly where some of the operators may not have been, um, acting appropriately or in accordance with, with the terms of their approval?
Yep. Uh, so in, at the moment, um, there's a couple of fronts that we're looking at, um, legally, so there's a number of appeals on foot, um, and prosecutions on foot, so I won't be able to go into the detail of those. Um, but I think, um, the media has spoken quite a bit about some of those runs that have been achieved between this, particularly with the state and ourselves. Um, one is the Transitional Environmental Programme for Newgrow. Um, I think there is still some work to do there, so I'm meeting with Newgrow in the coming weeks to talk to them about that. Um, we've got, um, the other appeals which are proceeding to trial in May and June, so , uh, they're the, the actual development approval appeals, we'll add to the three big landfills that are subject of the report later on the agenda. Uh, and I want to, um, start to focus in my role on, um, some safe audit capability, so, sorry, self audit capability for the industry, so that we can, um, move towards a code of practice where they are actually, uh, more mindful of the impacts that they have on the community, uh, and they might be able to open up some communication channels to the community of exactly what they are doing within their boundaries, um, being mindful of the impact they are having on the residents.
Um, noting that we're only, um, a short way into, um, our, our new approach, the, the Waste and Circular Economy, um, Transformation Directive, uh, however, given your several, uh, years of experience in this area, are you starting to sense a shift, I guess, in the thinking of the relevant regulators within this space, that they're holding the operators to account more than what they may have done so in the past?
Yeah, I think so, and I think there is a, a very big shift in the industry overall from what I can gather so far. The last twelve months has been very eye-opening for the industry, um, the, the impacts of China soared and the overall, um, change that we all need to embrace in waste and what we're producing. You know, ninety percent of the stuff that goes in the hulls is stuff that can be reused, it's the materials of value, um, so we all need to, as, as individuals and as a community, do things a lot differently.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, yes, councillor Ireland.
Mr. Davy?
That's all right.
Um, I'm just wondering, whose responsibility is it to ask the composters to do in-vessel composting, so that it will reduce the odour that people have been experiencing for twenty years or more?
Um, there are established approvals for the operators that we have in Ipswich, and those established approvals are on the basis of, uh, windrow composting. The, um, the environmental approvals that are in place specify, um, essentially standards of release, and, um, if those standards of release are not being complied with, then action will, will need to be taken to correct that. Now, that might be operational changes to stick with windrow compost, composting, but if it's not possible to actually achieve those standards, then there are other mechanisms that need to be played. There is no specific mechanism that can just say at one point, I'll walk in and go to a, a operator, you must go to in-vessel, or you must go to, um, anaerobic digestion or some other technology. Um, so this is where the, the difficulty lies. Um, it needs to be a, an industry and a regulator-led approach to work together on that outcome, uh, and you've got to remember there is a substantial investment that would need to be made in, um, that changeover, and that would take time. So, um, I've got to meet with the regulators, um, so both the DES regulators and, um, the waste levy regulators to talk to them about this issue. Um, there is no doubt that, um, if we are to look at the waste future of reducing the amount of stuff that goes in the red bin, then that's going to result in an increase of stuff that's going to go into green bins, um, which then results in a change. So, you, you know, we don't necessarily want green waste in landfill, so what do we do with it? And this, this is a massive problem, uh, for all councils and for us as a community to try and resolve, because one of the uses of this material is, um, to be used in mulchers and composts and, you know, the potty mix you walk in and buy from Bunnings ultimately comes from a composter.
Um, Mr. Davy, the, the thing is that it's been twenty years in the making, and I know that, um, the department, state government department hasn't actually pinpointed where the odour comes from, but the residents have suffered for such a long time, and we're getting more and more residents through the Ripley Valley. Um, I just think that it's time that we, we tried to put stricter restrictions on. I'm not saying it's the composters that are all the problem, but if they went in vessel, then it, it stops the odour there and we can look elsewhere for, for that odour problem.
There, there's a potential, although in-vessel alone won't fix it, in that, um, there are, there are products that would arrive at those sites that are odorous in their own nature. And, um, if the, an in-vessel or an anaerobic digester is mismanaged, it will still result in odour. So just saying conversion to in-vessel, in my, um, limited knowledge so far, isn't a solution on its own. So there's got to be both better technology and behaviour change from the industry, but also from, from us, in that we're the ones who are putting things in bins that end up in hulls or, you know, in, um, composters. And so we need to, as a community, take more responsibility for what's going in the bins. I'm not saying that the industry have done the right thing here, um, and I'm not trying to defend them, but it, there is a holistic picture that we need to consider, and I know it's been twenty years in the making, but, you know, I think the last year has prompted, or the last two years has prompted more change- or the last two years has prompted more change for the industry than the previous 18. So, I'm hopeful that the future is a bit brighter than it has been, but it's early days in my engagement with the state and with the industry on this issue.
How have your engagements been conducted with the Odor Abatement Task Force yet in your new role?
I've talked to leadership in state government so far, so that's been quite positive. But I've got a long list of meetings to set up.
Thank you, Mr Davies. Mayor, just in wrapping up, I think, Mr Davies, your comments have highlighted a really important part in our Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive. When we came together as a group and started talking about what levers we could pull to apply pressure and get additional enforcement action against some of the operators, we acknowledged that there are gaps in this and what it will come down to is forming a relationship with some of these operators to encourage them and apply pressure to do the right thing and invest. And it is a very costly investment. So, as much as some people won't like the idea of having a relationship with some of these operators, we have no other, we have no power or authority to do what some would like us to do. It is about a relationship and to encourage them to working towards best practice, which will cost some of these operators a lot of money. But I'm not denying that residents expect and deserve that as well. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Any other questions of Mr Davy? Thank you, Mr Davy.
Thank you.
As I hope for discussion, a couple of weeks ago, the LGAQ had a waste forum. I think many of the councils, Ipswich had more councillors there than any other council. I think it was representative of what a big issue it is for us and our residents. And one thing that did come across is that the, what I heard from waste operators is that as soon as our Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive came out, they read it. I know RIQAQ said that they actually sat down with their waste operators and they're actually realising this is that we're leading the way. I think we're coming, going from being losers in waste, hopefully to being the leaders in waste, in what we do in moving forward. So, I acknowledge what you're saying and I agree with you. Deputy Mayor, we need to have those relations with the waste operators, as well as the regulators, to make sure that we get the changes that we need here. Any other discussion points? Council Fegner?
A big part of the directive for us was about compliance, but I also look forward to the economic opportunities that circular economy initiatives present to us. State government at some point will, this year, will be debating single-use plastics and, you know, making moves. Conversation around waste is loud and noisy and the federal government's got a lot of money on the line as well. We need to make sure that we're well poised to, you know, to embrace, you know, the waste industry to make sure that we are creating jobs and, you know, that it's a huge economic driver in our region. Lots of our landfills are privately owned, which is where the compliance comes in to say, well, yes, you know, we want to, you know, maintain good relationships with these operators, but they have to, in good faith, operate, you know, best practice. So, I look forward to seeing what that compliance action, or what comes of it, or how closely the state government are actually prepared to work with on this, as Mr Davy said. And you could get the sense of he's got a really good feeling about this and how it's moving. That's because people are increasingly becoming aware that waste isn't going anywhere. And if you embrace it in the right way, it can be a huge economic driver. So, I look forward to managing that opportunity and working with all levels of government to make sure that the opportunity is there for all of our residents, but we don't have to be disaffected by any of the negative and bad practices of a few of the operators within our local government area.
Thank you, Council Fegner. Any other discussion? There being no discussion? I'll then move that recommendation to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And Council Tully, if you're in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous and carried. Oh, yes. Do you want to put your microphone on?
I ask for leave of absence to go and celebrate with Ron and Eunice Shanahan at Flinders View, their 60th wedding anniversary. It's a wonderful milestone and on behalf of all the council, I'm going to deliver flowers and a certificate. I think it's wonderful that we are actually invited to attend these events to celebrate with community.
Okay, so you're moving that motion. They will give you a leave of that. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? Council Tully, say aye if you agree. Aye, that's unanimous, thank you. And please pass on our well wishes, that's one, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight. Item number eight is Local Government Illegal Dumping Partnership Programme. And the recommendation is that the report be received and contents noted. May I please have a mover for that report? Thank you, Council Fegner. And a second, Council Milligan, thank you. Does anyone want to speak to the relevant council officer? No, we're moving into discussion. I just want to thank the state government for providing the funding for two staff to do this very important activity. I mean, we've just sort of been talking about the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive, and a big part of that is compliance. It's great to see that there's a change, I think, with state government and us as a council with how we manage compliance and being far more responsible when it comes to illegal dumping. So, I thank you to the state government for that funding. I'll open up for any other discussion. There being no discussion, I move this report, I'll put this report to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Or Council Tully, if you'd like to say aye?
Yes, aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, no, that Council Island's not in the room. And it's carried, thank you. Move on to item nine, the Residential Swimming Pool Safety Education Awareness Programme. And that recommendation is that council endorse the draft Residential Swimming Pool Safety Education and Awareness Programme. May I have a mover, please? Thank you, Council Johnic. And a second, Council Cornsmur, thank you. Anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this programme, this report? No, will I open up for discussion? I think Council Johnic, no?
No, sorry.
I think just to note that I do like the pivot towards pool safety education awareness. I think it's a great way forward for us as a community. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Council Tully, please say aye if you're in favour?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous and passed. Thank you. We're now to item 10. I think Council Milligan will be leaving the room. Thank you. Item 10 is the Development Application Recommendation. Material Change of Use for General Industry (in brackets), Shed Kit Storage with Ancillary Office and including welding of metal brackets for off-site shed construction at 262 Hagsley Ambly Road, Walloon. And that recommendation is that the council approve development application number 4092/2020/MCU, subject to conditions and attachments. May I have a mover for that? Thank you, Council Cornsmur. And a second? Thank you, Council Fegner. Would anyone like to speak to the, I'll call the relevant council officer to the lectern, please? Please state your name and your title.
Good morning, Mayor Harding. And councillors, Anthony Bowles, Acting Development Planning Manager.
Congratulations on your recent information. Council Cornsmur, you had a question? Oh, the microphone.
Mr Bowles, if you could just detail the conditions that apply to this request.
Yes, there are quite a few conditions to this application, some that are purposefully designed to overcome the fact that the proposal is in a residential area and the proposal is essentially an interim use. So, I'll get through the conditions, but I'll probably leave with the most important condition that relates to this approval, which is the time limit to the approval, so number seven. So, the purpose of this condition is to restrict the use for a period of five years, after which the use is to cease. So, the purpose for that condition is to ensure that the non-compliance with the local master plan, which is intending for future residential uses in the area, is in compromise. So, the Walloon area, Figuina area as well, is intended for future residential uses. The main constraint that is preventing that in the short term, or even possibly up to 15 years, is the lack of store infrastructure. So, there's a large amount of large rural residential holdings at the moment, likely to stay that way for a while. But in the interim, this use is intermediate to sort of industrial home business type use that we are allowing on the basis that it's been operating for the last 20 odd years, since the late 70s, actually. So, the time limit of the approval is probably the most important condition. The other limitations are the description of the use, which is extremely specific for what it is. It is an open approval for general industry. It's specific to certain activities relating to the welding of certain components of a shed and the importation and exportation essentially of shed components on a vehicle. So, there's limits to the number of vehicles that can attend the site and the timeframes that those vehicles can attend, the number of staff and the work that those staff carry out, such as there is one part-time casual worker for welding and three full-time shed installers who are primarily based in the vehicles, moving components to and from the site. So, there are also requirements for waste collection, when it is to be collected during the hours of operation, which are restricted from, I think, 6.30am to 6.30pm on Monday to Friday. So, those limits to the approval in condition eight work in tandem with the overall time limit to narrow the focus of the development approval, to ensure that the impacts on the neighbouring properties are minimised. Another important condition will be number 17, access parking and manoeuvring areas. So, there are a large area of manoeuvring spaces for the trucks to drive in and do a lip and come out again. They're all required to be pitchment to prevent dust impacts coming about from the trucks.
Thanks, Mr Bowles. Just a supplementary question, and thanks for detailing a few of those high-level conditions. Ultimately, this comes to us as a council to make a decision because of a few of those factors, mainly the submissions that were made against this particular application. Are you confident that the conditions within this application truly encapsulate the concerns of the community that were expressed when those properly made submissions were made?
Yes, I've reviewed the submissions and I respect the matters raised in the submissions. And certainly without the level of attention we've paid to restricting the specific use and the management of the use, there are sensible concerns that needed to be addressed. So, I'm confident with the conditions that we've imposed that those concerns have been addressed. And over the next five years, there should be minimal interruption or disruption to the residents before the use eventually closes down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Bowles, I'd just note that this also required state government approval. What state government did, was that gained or?
Yes, so that related to the access to the road. The main road is a state-controlled road. So, any requirements relating to the access were given to us from state. They've approved it, yes.
Council Cornsmur? Can you put your microphone?
Mr Bowles, can we be confident that there be no further extension of activities at that site?
Yes.
In that five years?
Yes, so the approval itself is quite restrictive. It is unusual for us to go to such length in describing the use to the level of detail that we have. So, it isn't such that someone can come in and do any other general industry as you might get in an industrial state where that would be something we would seek to achieve. Here, all we've given approval for is specifically shed kit storage with ancillary office, including welding of metal brackets with off-site shed construction. There is no other permit like that in the Ipswich City Council area, because this is very specific to the use to restrict the possibility of expansion or continuation.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I now open the matter up for discussion. I guess Council Cornsmur's in division four. Do you have any other points you'd like to raise?
Yes, thank you. I'm convinced by the large extent of the conditions on this that we should approve it.
Any other discussion points?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add, there's probably not a week that goes by, certainly within division three, that we're not receiving some kind of, I guess, complaint or concerns outlined by residents who are living beside or amongst home-based businesses, legacy standalone businesses. It raises a whole heap of issues and anxiety within the community, living with noise and dust and further pollution. So, just conscious, this is a very tricky area, but I do take confidence in the council officers, you know, very detailed description of the conditions imposed on this particular home-based business, so.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the 21 people. Obviously, this has come to us because once 20 properly made submissions are made, that does come to council. And I know that there were 21 properly made submissions from 13 different addresses. So, I'd like to thank people who were, you know, looking out for their community. And I think because of that, additional conditions have been put on to make sure that this is much better for the community as well. If there's no other discussion, Council Cornsmur? The microphone's off.
The extent of the conditions recognises the fact that we have had the 21 objections. Certainly, we consider that very strongly.
If there is no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Council Tully, please say aye if you agree.
Aye.
Aye, I can, sorry, did you pick your hand? Thank you. Oh, it's unanimous, thank you. I'll just wait for Council Milligan to return to the room. Actually, while we wait for him to return to the room, may I move that we have a 15-minute adjournment? It's 10:60, so we'll come back at, I guess, I'll say 10.30, a 20-minute adjournment. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Council Tully, are you going aye? Okay, thank you. We're adjourned till 10.30, thank you. We're adjourned till 10:30. Thank you.
Thank you, it's 10.30, we've come back from adjournments, so we're on to item number 11. And I'll just note that obviously councillor Tully is on audio link, councillor Ireland has lived in absence, and I think councillor Millian's just coming into the room now. So item 11 is the Infrastructure Environment Division Capital Portfolio Financial Performance Report for January 2021, and that recommendation for the report is that the monthly financial performance report on the Infrastructure and Environment Department's capital portfolio budget for 2020/21 be received and contents noted. May I have a mover for that please? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A seconder, councillor Quonshem, thank you. I'd like to speak to the relevant council officer on this. Yes please. Please write your name and your title.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors, Jeff Keats, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr Keats, for this report, and I guess I do note that we are looking at an underspend, one of your savings, but some, obviously there are some delays and so on.
That's correct, yes.
And I understand the organisation's working on that.
Yes.
My concern is we're on page 302, and we're looking at the fact that by having the savings and deferred of $9 million for this financial year will substantially affect council's asset sustainability ratio in a year. Could you explain to me what the impact will be?
Sure, we thought that was important just to note for the attention of the committee, because there is about, if you look at the sub-programme, about $9 million that is being either saved or deferred in relation to asset sustainability. The asset sustainability ratio, just to write a little bit of background, is a financial ratio, it's an indicator only that measures our rehabilitation spend compared to depreciation, depreciation being the consumption of assets over a period of time. So it's an indicator from a financial perspective that says, are we spending enough money in maintaining our assets? That ratio in the budget sense, as it stands at the moment, is 69%, and has been relatively on that for the last couple of years. If with the $9 million drop from a budget side of things, we'd drop it down to 55%. Actuals will obviously be different to that, and we're seeing depreciation be even higher, so that may even come lower when we start to look at actuals closer to 50%. So it's an indicator. The key from an asset sustainability perspective is obviously asset management, and our asset management plans would be the key aspect ultimately in terms of what our level of investment should be.
So, Mr Keats, I understand that it is an indicator, but it is reported on in our annual report?
It absolutely is, correct.
And what does the measure that the state government recommend?
The recommendation as a target is 90%.
90%.
Correct.
So in our annual report, will be a red?
It will be certainly, yes. And when they look at that as part of it, they do look at a bit of an average spend over a few years, because sometimes there can be deferrals or based on age of assets. So they do look at, when the Queen's End Office had ordered that, look at some of the averages. But yes, we are definitely below, and we have been below the target for a number of years. And some of that can be around things like, if you've got new infrastructure, then you wouldn't be rehabilitating that. So it often depends upon the age of your infrastructure and your age of the council. But yes, as a comparative, we are below the target, yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of the CFO? No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
CEO, may I just ask, do you have any advice for us as the council and the board on whether this is concerning or not, and what do you think the organisation should be doing to address it?
Look, it's an issue about making sure you catch that up. So we've still got the cash, so what we need to be doing is building that into future years' capital programme to catch up that renewal. That renewal spend is about making sure that over the life of assets, that the spend is there and it can be lumpy. I have to say that 69% for a, if that's been our long-term average for a council with such a large amount of new development, is a comparatively okay number. You know, the 90% target is in a mature area where basically you're just replacing all your assets and you don't have any new ones. You get new roads and you don't have to touch them for 20 years. Whereas once they get to that, you know, 50, somewhere between 50 and 100 years, you generally have to start to dig them up and completely replace them, which is very, very expensive, about 10 times the cost to reconstruct a road as to just profile at the top. So I wouldn't be that concerned in a year. You should really look at it over the term of council. And so over the term of council, if you've got 55 and then a 75, then that's, you know, that's okay.
Thank you, CEO. And I'll open up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the report to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand, and councillor Tully, please say aye if you're in agreeance. Thank you, it's unanimous, thank you. Item 12 is the exercise of delegation report, and that recommendation, the report is that the report be received and contents noted. May I have a mover, please? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And a seconder? Thank you, councillor Fickner. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer on this? No, I'll open the matter up for discussion. There being no discussion, I then move this report to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And councillor Tully, are you in aye?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. I think we'll move on to item 13, which is a Planning and Development Court action status report, and the recommendation is that the report be received and the contents noted. May I have a mover for that, please? Thank you, councillor Fickner. And a mover, councillor Quonshem, thank you. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come down to that, please? Is that your name?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors, again, Anthony Bowles, Acting Development Planning Manager.
Thank you. Now, I'm not wanting to breach any legal inconference, so please hold me back if I am, but my understanding is that one of the waste operators has withdrawn some court action, is that correct?
Yes, we have. It isn't actually on this list, but there was an application withdrawn, an appeal withdrawn, I think it was the, let me just check. Yeah, I think it was the biorecycle appeal. I'll have to get the appeal number, because I think we took it off the list before we published this list.
I was expecting to see it, yes.
So, yeah, so it is a big win for us to have that withdrawn, because it's no longer something we need to contest in court. Not that we haven't got enough of those already at the moment, we've got three other appeals that we're currently set to have a hearing in 10th of May, but that was withdrawn, yes.
Okay. Will that be in the next court action status report? That'll come to council?
I can include that, yes.
Yes, thank you, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. I don't have any other questions? No, thank you, Mr Bowles.
Okay, thank you.
I'll open that up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Tully, if you're in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous and passed. That is the last of the formal items. We now move on to notices of motion, and there being none. We then go to matters arising, and there being none. We now move to procedural motions and formal matters, and I'd like to allow a late procedural motion to be presented for urgency and it's a pressing urgent matter. And the title of that procedural motion, of that motion, sorry, is Special Recovery and Reconstruction Task Force. So I move that. Do I have a seconder, councillor Johnic? I now put to the vote of those who are happy for this procedural motion to be heard today, please raise your hand. And councillor Tully, please say aye if you're in favour.
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. I think councillor Johnic, you'd like to move the motion entitled Special Recovery and Reconstruction Task Force?
Yes, I'd like to move the motion, please. So the motion, following the devastating Halloween storm event on the 31st of October 2020, to continuing weather events and recent community engagement, it has become even more evident that our residents of the hardest-hit areas are still suffering hardship and ongoing issues due to prolonged recovery and reconstruction efforts. It has been almost 19 weeks since an unprecedented hailstorm decimated homes, cars and property in Springfield Lakes, Springfield, Rosewood, Walloon and Thuguna areas, and residents remain uncertain about their future. According to the Insurance Council of Australia, current insurance claims are estimated to be $39,604, and the damage bill is expected to reach $1 billion. The severity of this catastrophic storm and delay in recovery and reconstruction continues to cause significant distress and ongoing hardship for too many Ipswich families, in particular those living in uninhabitable dwellings with extensive roof damage and the ongoing threats of storm season. It is evident that this disaster needs further escalation and coordination across responsible agencies, stakeholders, industry and community. It is therefore proposed that council establish a special recovery and reconstruction task force to engage with and coordinate key stakeholders to address the ongoing impacts and emerging issues in affected communities. This includes ongoing assessment of impacts and recovery, community engagement, communication and collaboration of all recovery partners, and monitoring of recovery progress. B nominates myself, councillor Nicole Johnic, to chair the task force, supported by the local recovery group, and coordinator. C assess and scope additional relief and support options to further expedite recovery and reconstruction and assist those experiencing severe hardship. And D authorise waiver of fees to access council-owned and operated waste transfer stations for residents of impacted areas to dispose of storm damaged material, excluding commercial or construction and demolition waste, through a fair and equitable system to be determined by the CEO.
Thank you very much, councillor Johnic. I think councillor Quonshem would like to second, that's my understanding.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. I'll see, councillor Johnic, would you like to speak further to that motion?
I would just like to add that our community is no stranger to natural disasters, and the people of Ipswich are as resilient as they come. However, our resilience through floods and storms has also taught us what to expect from our insurers and the standard of response, sense of urgency and empathy that is needed when people lose their homes, when they have to live in appalling conditions while waiting for urgent repairs. It's a service we pay for and we pay well for. When this expectation and need isn't met, it's fair to want to understand why and explore how to improve these things for next time. It is fair to understand and ask why.
Thank you, councillor Johnic. Councillor Quonshem?
In seconding this motion, I support this further action by council to acknowledge and relieve the ongoing distress of residents. It is known that following such a disaster there are longer term effects, particularly where residents have been unable to return to their normal lives. We will continue to work with our recovery partners to provide support to residents in the affected areas, allowing those residents access to legal advice, housing support and counselling, and will be undertaking further advocacy with insurers. And I thank councillor Johnic for her work on behalf of her constituents.
Thank you. I guess myself, I'll be fully supporting this, councillor Johnic. We went to the Insurance Council of Australia Community Forum last week, and certainly Insurance Council Australia talked about the fact that, I think the bill so far, the damage bill is over $930 million, so it will be a billion dollar disaster that's happened here. And normally after this period of time, they would have completed 35% of claims. They've only completed 24%. And obviously, as each reign, and as we had this week, there are people really suffering with really poor mental health. Having your house damaged is probably, I've never had a house claim myself, it's probably a once-in-a-lifetime thing that happens, that people are actually claiming that the house has been destroyed or, you know, that it is uninhabitable. People are wanting support, not justice with the claim, but how to do a scope of work, how to get that certified, all those things. They feel as though they're not being supported by their insurance company with that. So I commend you councillor Johnic, and thank you for working with us on doing this to make sure that we will advocate and support our community as they work with the different agencies for support, including the insurance companies. I'll then open to any other discussion.
Yes, I have a comment back.
Yes, councillor Tully.
Yeah, obviously the point of it is, it's a pity that the insurance companies haven't been more advanced, because early in the week after the 31st of October, they had, a number of the insurance companies had drones surveying the damage around the Springfield Lakes and the adjoining suburbs, so that there was some serious activity early in the piece. Then you wouldn't think it would take long to assess the damage of each property. It's mainly the physical structure of the homes, in some cases some of the personal effects where, you know, the hair penetrated the property. And those amounts that have been mentioned, over $900 million, just to put that in perspective, that's very close to the estimated $1 billion for the 7,000 or so flood class action victims. So, you know, it's a huge amount of damage, you know, related to it. Not all flood victims were part of the class action, but it certainly puts it in perspective. And the flood class action is believed to be the, possibly the largest class action in Australian history. So that shows you the amount of damage done in the afternoon of the 31st of October last year. So hopefully this will give a real opportunity for the residents of affected areas to have their claims assessed and the work completed as soon as possible.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Yes, you're right, I think we had reporters with drones out the next day on the Sunday after the hailstorm, but yeah, and that week we had, there were drones up, emergency services certainly had drones out taking the, doing the mapping and so on. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to add that it's not all encompassing for all insurance companies. So obviously I've heard a number of good stories from my residents of works being completed, but statistically there is a lag, and they had a job to do, even during a pandemic. So I believe that more attention could have been paid to the circumstances for our residents.
And obviously there's that ongoing need now for that legal support, mental health support and so on. Thank you. If there being no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand, and councillor Tully, please say aye if you're in agreeance.
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous and passed, thank you very much. There being no other matters, I'll now close the meeting at 10.47. Councillor Mansell, we have the next one at 11 o'clock? Thank you very much.
Be prudent.
Be prudent.